Good evening. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I invite you to join us.
The Pledge of Allegiance is due to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Garrick?
Here.
Pepcorn?
Here.
Preston?
Here.
Strand?
Here.
Mahoney?
Here.
Health. April is the STD Awareness Month and the Family Planning Clinic at Fargo-Cast Public Health provides STD counseling, testing, and treatment. Services are confidential and available to men and women with fees based on household size and income. No one is ever turned away with inability to pay. This is National Public Health Week, and throughout the week Fargo-Cast Public Health Team members will have an opportunity to talk about having a passion of further work and how their efforts contribute to the overall health of the community. Tune into Fargo-Cast Public Health Facebook and Instagram pages this week. Library. This is National Library Week, and this year's theme is Connect With Your Library, which is meant to be highlight libraries as places to connect technology, services, resources, programs, ideas, classes, and books. Libraries also connect communities to each other. During April, the library is holding a library card design contest for all ages. Winning designs will become a limited edition of the Fargo Public Library cards. Library staff will select the finalists, and the public will vote on the final winning designs, which will be announced in June. Planning. Residents have now started moving into the Merchantile Building downtown with 50 of the 100 apartments already leased. The Merchantile Building also includes main floor commercial and will house the police substation. The building is attached to the Merchantile parking garage, which opened November 2020. This is an interesting thing in the planning department. Our planning department was nominated by the United Way for the Power of Partnership Award for 2022. The award goes to a company or person who personifies collaboration by extending their minds, hearts, dollars, and/or goods to further the mission of United Way in an invaluable and immeasurable way. The work has recognized the city's role in allocation of HUD funds and care funds for the work in Prevention and Divergent Program, which was initiated in 2020 and is an effort to keep people out of homelessness. They also are part of Home for Habitat, and the team went into the House for Habitat and actually painted one wall. So if you see a little off-colored wall in this house, that's by the planning department that did it, and it was fun to see them involved in the community as well. For Police. On March 27th, the Fargo Police Department hosted the K-9 Detector Training and Certification for 18 Teams of Handlers and Canines from across North Dakota and Minnesota. The certification consists of in-depth training for narcotic detection in vehicles and in rooms. All of the Fargo Police Department's K-9 team passed their certification. The certification also included competition for those who attended, and Fargo Police Sergeant Samuel Bowman and his K-9 partner, Blue, took first place overall with a score of 199 out of 200. Detective Brent Willie and K-9 Kilo were presented with a plaque for winning the Case of the Quarter Award for the Fourth Quarter of 2021 by Region 12 of the U.S. Police K-9 Association, and they also received several medallions for involvement in other significant cases in 2021. The new thing in the police department is LexisNexis Desk Officer Reporting System, a new online reporting system from Fargo Police Department, which is now available to the public. The public can report online and enables agencies to collect minor incident reports with the public online or through a mobile device. John Strand will like this. There's a garbage bag challenge. Mike Morkin, Valley News Live, has had challenges to take a garbage bag and fill it up with all the trash that came in through the winter. Surprisingly, although this was put out in Fargo, two people in Alabama have also posted on their website. So, John, I give you this challenge. Let's see how well we could do to clean up the area that you live.
Absolutely.
Other things. Tonight, we're having a video honoring finance director Ken Costin, who retired on April 1st after 35 years of service for the city of Fargo. Trent truly made a huge difference in our finance department and has made us a very sound financial department at this time. Now, once you know that the guy retires, and he's in Nashville tonight, so he can't come tonight to get his award or applause, but we want to thank him for all his years of service, and I'd ask the commissioners that we do give him a round of applause.
My dad was a contractor, and from the sixth grade on, we worked hard labor in his contracting business. By the time I was a senior in high school, I knew physical labor wasn't for me, and I wanted to use my brain instead of my brawn, and so I chose this path of accounting. So maybe I'm lazy, or maybe I'm smart. You'll have to decide that one. In the early years of my career, I worked enormous amounts of time because I was the only one here. There was a lot of work to do. I knew what work needed to be done, so I just said, this is part of my job. This is going to be my work ethic until I'm able to move to a different type of position. And so, you know, I give a lot of credit to my wife and family. They obviously have been very supportive, and it's been an awesome run and a great career here, and just grateful for a lot of people and a lot of opportunity that I've been able to live my life and have a satisfying career.
Ken Costin, Director of Finance, in appreciation for your 35 years of dedicated service to the city of Fargo Auditor's Department dated April Fool's Day, 2020.
Approve the Order Agenda. Is there a motion to approve the Order Agenda, moving Item 3 from the Consent Agenda to the Regular Agenda and adding an extra item to the end of the Regular Agenda to consideration appointment to the Airport Authority?
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the March 21st, 2022 Regular Meeting?
So move.
Second.
Moving seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, Items 1 through 30, excluding Item 3, which has been moved to the Regular Agenda?
So move.
Is there a second? Roll call vote.
Garrick?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorns?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Here. Resident comments. Victoria Johnson has come here in person, so she won't be virtual. Victoria, you're up first.
Mr. Mayor and Member of the Commissioner, my name is Victoria Johnson. I am a family advocate and a parent with a neurological disability. Today, I just wanted to talk to you about two things. One is April is Autism Awareness Month, and I would love to see the city show that they accept those with that neurological developmental disability, that they are welcome. It's disorder, not disability. Got to correct myself. That they are welcome and that they're part of our community. By lighting this building blue, as you see, I'm wearing blue. This is not my normal wear. So I would love to see the city do that. Secondly, I would like to talk about affordable housing. This weekend, I had an opportunity to go and knock over 100 doors, and every single door we knock, we come across a family, and one of the issue is affordable housing. It broke my heart as a family advocate just to know that the people I work with deal with the same issue, but there's other people also dealing with the same situation. What is Fargo doing to help our families? What is Fargo doing to create affordable housing for families, children, and our elderly? We came across a couple. They're in their 50s, over 50s, and she shared with us that where she's living because she couldn't afford the 55 and over, the affordable homes. And we asked, how much was it? She said it was over $1,600 a month for one bedroom. One bedroom, $1,600 a month. To see that as her husband came in to join the conversation, my heartache because that could be my grandma. That can be my grandpa. To just see that and to see that our city turned down a project that could possibly provide that affordable housing for families like that mom and many, many more others. Instead, our city say, we welcome big developer. You're welcome to create a building at whatever. You can increase the price if you want to, whatever you want. You have to answer to those who like you. You do not need to answer to big corporation or big developer. Thank you.
Brandon Crager.
Good morning or good afternoon, I'm sorry. First, I want to say thank you, or not thank you. I'm glad to see the day Pepcorn has thrown his hat into the ring. So thank you for doing that, and it'll be a good race. So tonight, the ending comes for the property at 419 Third Street North with a possible approval of the Kilborn project. This project has brought into mind the need for future goals for Fargo and the direction and how Fargo approaches its low-income housing with a very active developer in authentic housing, who I do feel has a future in low-income housing in the area. As many of you know, on the Economic Development Incentive Committee and Renaissance Zone Authority Committee stated that, and I do believe all of you, that every one of you care about low-income housing. I felt today to give you and those watching at home, the reality of why authentic housing would not work as it is. Imagine parking. I felt they could have rented the spots from the city. That'd be great, but if this is supposed to house families, imagine the impracticality. Living in low-income housing myself for a time with one child in order to go to winters, it was tough when the car was outside and you were in the same block. Imagine having multiple little ones or kids, and a car you have to park in the parcade that's not heated. Walking two to three blocks in the winter or summer, for that matter, to your place of living, carrying groceries or essentials needed for that trip. It provides a safety risk for kids walking in the summer or winter on the sidewalks while their parents are preoccupied carrying whatever essentials they needed for that trip. I have four kids now, and if I was in that position, the property, no matter the cost of up to $100 of saving potentially, is not what you would have been best for my family. I would look elsewhere. The practicality is not there, and we need to stop trying to fit a square peg in a circular hole. The city has a responsibility to the future tenants of that building. Not everyone's needs are going to be met at that one location either, with a grocery store or daycare. Do we expect them to have not to leave the downtown area? Do we expect them to find a job in downtown? Again, I'm sure people can punch holes in the part of my speech, but the point being is that this is an incomplete project. Another point defenders state is that we need affordable daycare, and there's so much more to that than the cost of daycare. The types of daycare, the philosophy of the daycare, how trained are the staff? I agree that daycare is brutal for those who use it. Cash kind of provides a relief for both rent and daycare if people qualify, and if they qualify for low-income housing, chances are they would qualify for that and much more. Again, I feel this important information, I feel the most important information that is lost in all the remarks, all the muck, is that commissioners have responsibility to the future tenants, and this authentic housing project, as it was, would not have been the responsible choice. Thank you.
Zachary Howitt.
Today, I wanted to talk about 419 Third Street North again. I am a college graduate in the area, and I, at one point, was working at the city in the Marketing and Communications Office, and I decided to leave for my own reasons. And now I'm serving the people of Fargo in different ways. I have a couple of different jobs that I'm doing, and I love meeting different people and helping them along the way. And also, at the same time, I have been following the Authentic Housing campaign thus far. And so I have been seeing what authentic housing is providing and what my peers need, and I'm seeing that they're made for each other. We really need to focus more on affordable housing and making sure that developments like Kilborn's condos that they're going to try to build in that lot, more expensive, overpriced housing should not be built, and we need to focus more on the affordable stuff. I live in a building that was built in the 1930s, and it has what's called the landlord special among my peers, which is when you just slap paint on everything indiscriminately, making sure that the windows are sealed, the actual paint is sealed off of the window frame, so you can't take it off. It has poor insulation, the pipes leak. There are so many problems with it, and yet it costs me over $800 a month to live there. So we need to focus more on the affordable side of things in downtown. Otherwise, the people who actually serve the community here, work at the restaurants, serve, you know, bartend, help make this place a really fun and, you know, really enriching environment to live in, we need to make sure that the people who actually run that engine can live here. Thank you.
Will Thompson.
Will Thompson, he/him, and candidate for the Fargo City Commission. I am unsurprised, and yet I'm still disappointed. I'm a hopeful kind of guy like that. Before I get into it, I want to give respect to Wes Philamone for fighting for the people's right to speak truth to power, because I'm about to speak some truth. The only real question left for authentic housing was, why haven't you already completed the market study? Never mind that it's common practice for a public benefit corporation to secure the site before sinking in resources, and never mind that site control could be secured on condition that they complete a market study. No, 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 no. We have to give it to Kilborn. You see, they've already sunk in the resources. Well, I guess you have to be rich to play the game. You see, a 15K for a market study or whatever it is, it's nothing for a leviathan like Kilborn, but for a working person, that's six months of hard labor. Working people, we measure our lives in time, you see? Time at work, and we spend most of our lives at work. And let's be clear, authentic is for hard-working people by hard-working people. So I don't think you understand what you're asking for when you're asking for more money from working people. You're asking for more time, for more life, and God only gives us so much life. And the working people, they've been spending all of their lives just trying to provide for themselves, and they're still struggling. Ask anybody right now. They don't have time to help or advocate for their neighbors, and yet some of them still stand up and do it anyway. So when you ask us to give more than we have, more money, more time, more life, understand that you're asking us to risk our money, our time, risk our lives. You would have a leviathan keep on eating its own tail while the people are starving in the streets. Well, my AP Euro teacher, John Johansson, taught us something about starving people and what they do, and they don't take things lying down. I'm but a humble messenger of the people, and yet you'd make me out to be some sort of reaper. Well, I guess that's who I have to be because the people are demanding a change from the status quo. They're no longer asking for it. You want us to put our lives on the line? Well, I'm here to say that the people are all in because the people's lives have been on the line. If you can't provide for the people of this town an affordable house in an area that's near where they work, I don't know what it is that you would like from downtown. Would you like it to be a ghost town? Because we're already seeing businesses leave. We're seeing family restaurants replaced by banks. We don't even have enough workers downtown to fill it. That's the sound of a worker out of time. Thank you.
Michael Grolam.
I took the night off from work tonight because I, like many people in the community, are deeply disappointed by the failure of city government to pursue the authentic housing project for affordable housing in downtown Fargo. Like many cities in the country, we have a major affordable housing crisis in this town. Sorry, my notes are very small. We see this today in a deliberate move to block a superior housing project from authentic housing in favor of one that will offer significantly less housing, pay less in taxes, will require taxpayer support, which we'll be voting on later, and will charge twice as much for rent. I have no idea why so much of the case against the authentic housing process appears to be vapid and contrived. Most of it seems to be driven by phony concerns about finance and the experience of the project managers. This is for a project that is led by former city staffers of impeccable reputation, a project manager coming off a project similar in size to every project Kilborn has completed to date. At the same time, we have city bureaucrats bad-mouthing the financing of this project despite the lender's approval and never anything but empty baggeries. Some of these city bureaucrats think they know more about the financing of this project than the bankers are willing to finance it. I think the issue with the financing is less about how it's going to be paid for as who is going to own it. Because this project throws a giant wrench in the plans of our local landlords. They want enormous subsidies to build high-priced projects, and this puts lie to their entire business model. We can put housing projects together, charge cheap rents, and do it better without any tax subsidies for what will eventually just be money going to shareholders, people who mostly don't live here, and if they do, are often the West Fargo suburbs. It's time for the people or the leadership of this town to represent these people who live here and not the people from West Fargo or Minneapolis or wherever that own the businesses here. It's the people who make this town great, not the developers. Thank you.
Resident comments is finished. We'll go to Public Input Opportunities, number 32A, Metropolitan Park 3rd Edition. Approval recommended by the Planning Commission on 3/1/22 is zoning change from limited commercial and multi-dwelling residential to MR3, multi-dwelling residential with a planned unit development overlay. First reading of the rezoning ordinance, a plot of the Metropolitan Park 3rd Edition, and a planned unit developed master land use plan. Donald Crust to explain.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, our first item here tonight, as the mayor has stated, is the Metropolitan Park 3rd Edition. To locate that for you here, this is 45th Street South, Calico Drive. Up here is the former Anderson Softball Complex. There are two lots here. As you see, there's the existing developed apartment building with its garages and this undeveloped lot here. The site looks about like this as of this morning. As you can, you see the developed property here, the undeveloped property on your left, and then there's a private drive that runs along the length of this that provides access from the west. Just a couple more shots there of the existing apartment building, a couple different perspectives. The existing zoning, there are two different zones. The pinkish color is limited commercial. The orangish color is MR3, multi-dwelling residential. The applicant proposes to rezone this property to entirely a residential zoning, the MR3, and to create a high-density housing project here to build a new building that will attach to the existing building. And to be able to get that density, he's requested a planned unit development that makes a few modifications in the existing development standards of the MR3 zone. The plat to this would combine the two lots into a single lot, as you see here. Once those lots are combined, this is the master land use plan for the planned unit development that shows the general layout of the building. This is that existing building we looked at. These are four of the original garages. The rest have been removed. You saw those garages in the earlier photograph. This is actually the first-floor parking here, but this is the footprint of the building, the new building, that will connect to the existing building. There is both underground and first-level parking on this, as well as some surface parking, and, you know, the interface with the private drive here. So access is from there, from Calico Drive and from 30th Avenue South. There are some amenities in here that the applicant can detail for us. This is what the proposed building would look like. These are just a couple of renderings provided by the applicant. Again, you're not approving the renderings. These are just how this is, about how this is going to look for this site. So this would be the new building here and the existing building here. The requested modifications, one of the things the applicant wanted to do is to be able to have an in-house daycare. So that's a modification to the allowed uses. They can have a daycare of greater than 13 children and adults, serving the residents of that apartment building. Increase the density to 32 acres. Increase the building height a little bit so they can be able to build this high-density project and make a couple of adjustments to the parking and provide some additional landscape buffering for that. And that's the chart that's in your staff report. The applicant, Nate Volmuth-Goldmark, is with us this afternoon and may wish to address the commission. Applying commission's recommendation is stated in the staff report and shown on the screen for this planned unit development zone change and plat. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this rezoning? Is developer here?
Yes, sir.
Just a question, a one-bedroom. Do you have daycare? And I'm curious what a one-bedroom would be, probably.
The rate of a one-bedroom, Mayor? I unfortunately can't answer that question. It'll be a market-rate housing project, however.
Because we saw Artist Flats had a two-bedroom for $835. I'm curious whether, as somebody mentioned today, $1,200, it wouldn't be that high, would it?
Um...
Or is that what it goes in market right now?
I can't speak to it, unfortunately.
Okay.
Sorry.
Anybody else want to speak to the rezoning? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Yes. Item B, Rocking Horse Farm 6th Edition. Approval recommended by Planning Commission on 2/1/22. Growth Plan Amendment to Propose Rocking Horse Farm 6th Edition from commercial to public and institutional. A zoning change from agriculture to public and institutional. First reading on the rezoning ordinance and a plot of the Rocking Horse Farm 6th Edition. Donald's on as well.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So this is the proposed Rocking Horse 6th Edition. This is on 52nd Avenue and Veterans Boulevard here. Probably been by this corner many times. As you see, there's a large undeveloped area of Rocking Horse here, and Rocking Horse Farm's 6th Edition will be cut out of that. This is actually a project for a West Fargo Public Schools Elementary School. So this is not a residential project. It's a school project. This is what the site looks like as of this morning. Just a couple of different shots there, some random water fowl out here on the lake there that look like Canada geese and some mallards out there this morning. The current zoning is agricultural. The proposed zoning is PI, public institutional, which, as your commissioners familiar, is the zoning we have for most educational institutions. We also, along with this, did a growth plan amendment. There was no growth plan originally specified, or no school originally contemplated in the Rocking Horse Development, which, as you know, has been there for a number of years. And so staff felt it was appropriate to designate this area specifically for public and institutional in the 2003 Southwest Future Land Use Plan, so that the zoning and the growth plan would go together. We did hold a growth plan meeting that we didn't, getting the surrounding neighbors did not attend, but we held the meeting at Osgood School to make it convenient for attendees. And so we just wanted to go through that process to confirm that this was a good school location here. Again, this is the map that's in your packet there showing the, it was originally proposed to be commercial development and now the public and institutional development. There's the plat, shows a single lot, and the dedications for the appropriate right-of-way for streets here. The applicant, Mike Love of Houston Engineering, as well as Mr. Mark Lemire from the West Fargo Public Schools, are with us this evening, as are Mr. and Mrs. Promersberger, the landowners, and may wish to address the commission. That concludes the recommended motion is stated in the staff report and shown on your screen. That concludes staff's presentation for this new school in 52nd Avenue Veterans.
Is there anyone present who wishes to comment on this recommended motion? Anyone present wants to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
So I take it, Don, there'll be a lot of Fargo residents going to this West Fargo school?
You have to talk to Mr. Lemire.
Roll call vote, please.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item C, Application filed by Dakota Specialty Milling for a payment in lieu of tax exemption for a project to be located at 1430 41st Street North, in which the application is used for an addition of an existing building to expand their operation, which includes agricultural processing. Jim Gilmore to explain.
I got the wrong slide up here, so... Still wrong, but why don't we just go without? The Dakota Specialty Milling is located in the industrial park in the northwest part of town at 1430 41st Street North. The proposed development is a $4 million expansion, be a 40,000-square-foot addition. They would create 14 additional jobs. Those jobs would all be between $20 and $28 an hour. The Tax Exempt Review Committee... The Tax Exempt Review Committee is recommending approval. The value of the property tax exemption is about $57,000 a year. I have Ryan O'Shine from the EDC could tell us a little bit about the company, and we also have a representative of Dakota Specialty Milling.
Mayor Mahoney, members of the commission. I'm here today with Peter Batte, president of Dakota Specialty Milling, company that's been around for a number of years in the Fargo Moorhead community. Great value-added ag company that uses custom-made ingredients and whole-grain blends. They then goes into a lot of finished products, breads, granolas, crackers, snacks. The company's got an opportunity to bring a significant line of business to the Fargo area and a decision to make whether that happens here at their St. Louis facility. And so I'm going to let Peter tell you a little bit more about that, but I just want to also recognize that the company in 2016 received a pilot for an expansion they did at that time. Under that pilot request, there was a commitment to create 16 jobs. They employed 84 at that time. The company now employs around 150 employees, so they've far exceeded the job commitment that they made back in 2016. And as Jim mentioned, they're looking at adding another 14 for this project and would be paying at least $20 an hour. So good-paying jobs, bringing work that's currently being done somewhere else, and helping this company make a choice to expand here. So with that, I'll maybe turn it over to Peter to tell you a little bit about the company, about the project.
Yep. Thanks, Ryan. It's an exciting opportunity for us. We have a sister company in St. Louis that needs further expansion instead of expanding down there. We want to take the advantage of growing our business in Fargo, both for the resources, the people, the opportunity on the property that we currently had. And then we have a customer that is kind of pushing the envelope for us to do that. Over the last three years, obviously, we've had challenges with customers, labor force, pandemic-related issues. So getting this pilot is a big help to make the decision, as well as several other pieces of the project to look into. But overall, we're really excited to add the jobs, add the sales to our staff, and work further in the city of Fargo and continue to grow our businesses here.
Thank you. Any questions, commissioners?
Mr. Garrick?
Peter, thanks for growing in Fargo. I'm glad to hear your success. If you don't get the 56 grand a year, will you grow in Fargo?
You know, it's definitely one of the considerations. We'll continue to grow in Fargo one way or the other, I believe, but for this type of an incremental jump, there's a lot of factors, and the tax benefit is definitely part of our decision-making process.
Sure, as it would be for anybody. And like I always, I don't blame you for asking. I expect that you do. But I think what I heard you say is that you would still grow here, and I think that would be a smart thing to do. We have the workforce, and we have the ability to work with you to grow your company. So thank you for growing again, but there is no but for.
Mr. Preston?
Ryan, this is a question for you. It sounds like the EDC has been involved in monitoring progress towards both or towards job development with the 2016. You will continue to be involved in monitoring that?
Yeah, and it's a timely question. We actually met today with Jim Gilmore and Mike Splonowski with the city to go over the technology that we're implementing to help track these incentives going forward. So we're utilizing technology, our CRM system, and kind of an annual automated outreach where we're going to be connecting with companies who've received pilots to track that progress and the commitments they've made towards job creation.
So you're not quite there?
We're there in terms of the system. I'd say we're 80% of the way there. We're just working out a couple of kinks, so.
How did you get the numbers from 2016?
Oh, that I actually went back and looked from the previous pilot request and then, you know, just kind of the regular updates we do with our primary sector. So ask Peter where they're at, yeah.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Thank you. Both of you. Anybody else in the public want to speak to this? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Does there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Garrick?
No.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Yes. Item, I just got to get to you, Bruce. Recommendation of a credit agreement with the Bank of North Dakota for Finance associated with the local cost share of Series C work on the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. Bruce, grab to explain.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and commissioners. This item, as the mayor just mentioned, is related to the Red River Valley Water Supply Project and the Series C work that you approved at your July 26, 2021 meeting. And this work is being financed by the Garrison Diversion Conservancy District through an infrastructure loan from the Bank of North Dakota. And one of the loan requirements is a credit agreement from the involved parties, which includes, they're shown on the screen, the Garrison Diversion Conservancy District, Lake Agassay Water Authority, and the cities of Fargo and Grand Forks. And you've heard about this before, obviously. It's an important, multi-generational project, and also is a big step in making our region more resilient with respect to climate changes. So just a quick refresher, this is a high-level plan overview of the project. In its simplest form, it involves an intake structure on the Missouri River, a transmission pipeline to the Cheyenne River, and a discharge structure at the Cheyenne River. Some of this work is in progress at the Missouri River intake. Work is proceeding on the intake screens, the wet well and tunnel. With respect to the pipeline, this is a zoomed-in view of certain segments of the transmission pipeline. That work is in progress. On this slide, we show contracts 5A and 5B. This is simply a zoomed-out view showing the entire project length and the work being performed under Series A, B, and C agreements that you previously approved. This slide then shows the discharge structure at the Cheyenne River, and the good news is this work is essentially complete. And again, it was important to get an early start on these project components because they had obtained the required state and federal permits, and the work needed to be started before those permits expired. This slide you've seen before. This shows the work included under the Series A agreement. The reason it's a standalone agreement is because it's related to the 2019-2021 state biannual funding, and that's subject to a 90% state and 10% local cost share. This slide shows the work included under the Series B agreement. Again, it's standalone because the work related to the 2019-2021 state biannual funding, but subject to a different cost share. This work is subject to a 75% state and 25% local cost share. And then similarly, this work, this slide shows the work included under the Series C agreement. Again, standalone because this work is related to the current 2021-2023 biennial budget, but it's also subject to a 75% state and 25% local cost share. It's important to note that, starting with this Series C work, Garrison Diversion will be financing all of the local cost share for construction on the remainder of the project, and the members of the Lake Agassay Water Authority will then pay their proportionate share in terms of annual debt service based on their water allocation. Fargo share of the costs associated with the A, B, and C agreements have been budgeted in the water utility budget over four annual budget cycles. They're shown on this screen, 2019, 2020, 2021, and this year, 2022. So tonight, we're asking for approval of the credit agreement required by the Bank of North Dakota for an infrastructure loan for the Series C work on the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. We've got the suggested motion shown on the screen. Appreciate the opportunity to provide this project update. I would also like to recognize Mary Meridian with the Garrison Diversion Conservancy District. Mary is the deputy program manager for the Red River Valley Water Supply Project, so I want to thank Mary for being here, and she can help answer any questions that you might have about the project, the permits, or construction status. So thank you, commission.
Can I have questions first, or do you have a motion?
I have a question, actually.
Okay, go ahead.
Remind us, Bruce, again, the timeframe when this would be operable?
Well, at this point in time, we originally had, I believe it was a 10-year build. We're trying to accelerate that to a six-year build, so we're working really hard. If things go according to plan, this would be operable, Mary, six years from now, so we've got to.
Six years from now?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Pepcorn?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Bruce, my question is, so I've heard that there's a potential of get more federal funding. Where would the money go to if we got more federal funding? Where would it be directed? Or is that unknown at this point?
Well, that's yet to be determined, but we are going to pursue every avenue for funding we can, and that would include federal funding. At a minimum, we would like to see an equal share between the state and the local users.
The federal funding project would become off McCloskey Canal, so that would save you $200 million because you don't have to go from the Missouri to McCloskey. And then if the feds put in for it, it's a good question, because then that would bring down the total cost of 1.2 billion would come down because of the fed's part of the project, which is $200 million.
Well, just, Mr. Chair, just real quick. So one option I think we should look at is that the percentages, especially the smaller rural systems, you know, the cost share for some of those smaller groups is, like for them, it's a lot. And so to me, if there were some way that we could apply the federal funding to reduce the cost share, especially for the smallest, anyway, if that's possible, I think at least we could look into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. That will be a consideration. We are concerned about the affordability for some of the smaller users, and so we're working very hard to try and make that affordable because we want the original nominators for the 165 CFS to stay on board.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, it's, we should, we can really be proud of our community and the support of our regional governance, as the state and Minnesota as well, North Dakota and Minnesota. In this era of crazy erratic weather cycles, to be on the path to prepare for resiliency in a sense of droughts and/or floods, and they're both essential for a good, solid future, this is leadership that will last for generations and investments that will go forward into the future beyond our calculation. So that said, I move the recommended motion.
Second.
Moving second. Any further discussion? I'd just like, as Chair of Lawa, to commend Mary in this role to get us a loan from Garrison. It really helps us to have this at a reasonable rate and interest as well, and her work with the state also helped bring down our cost to a 2% loan rather than a 3% or 4%. So Mary's been very critical in helping us get to that point, so Mary, I just want to say thank you for that, so. Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item 34, Recommendation to authorize appropriate staff to negotiate agreement with North Dakota Soybean Processors and Casserole Water Users District for Water and Wastewater Services. Bruce, grab to explain as well.
Yes, thank you again, Mayor and commissioners. This is a slightly different item, but it's related to a request that we received from the North Dakota Soybean Processors for Water and Wastewater Services for a new soybean crushing plant to be located near Castleton. You may have heard or read about this recently, but I think it's important to note that we are providing similar services right now to the Thurleton Ethanol Plant, also near Castleton, and we think it provides another great opportunity for revenue diversification for the city of Fargo. It would involve three entities, the North Dakota Soybean Processors, the city of Fargo, and Casserole Water Users District, because the crushing plant would be located within Casserole's water service territory. So in very preliminary discussions among the three of us, we certainly think this is possible to accomplish, and we have agreed in principle not to reinvent the wheel, but rather to basically follow the Thurleton ethanol model in terms of contracts and agreements. So just a couple of very quick slides on the infrastructure improvements that would be required to accomplish this. So this is a picture of the water reclamation plant, and it would require an expansion of our effluent reuse facility that was originally installed to further treat secondary effluent before sending it to the ethanol plant. Although our secondary effluent does meet the EPA's Clean Water Act standards, it didn't meet the quality requirements of the ethanol plant. So the effluent reuse facility was built, and it incorporates ultrafiltration and reverse osmosis membrane technology, the same thing we utilize at the water treatment plant. So to meet the quantity and quality requirements of the soybean crushing plant, the capacity of the effluent reuse facility needs to be increased, and so that's represented by the red box on this slide. And then this slide shows the pipeline route from the water reclamation plant out to the soybean crushing plant near Castleton. The route will include both a water transmission pipeline and a wastewater return pipeline, so that there will be parallel pipelines. Again, the specific cost shares and ownership operation responsibilities will be identified in the three-way agreement. And so that's a very brief introduction to the formal requests that we've received from the North Dakota Soybean Processors. Obviously, all sorts of details to be worked out, but we're seeking commission approval to pursue this at this time. Do have a suggested motion shown on the screen, and with that, would be happy to answer any questions you might have. And I also, with me tonight, have Jim Hassauer, our Water Reclamation Utility Director, and Jerry Blomke, Casserole Water Users District Manager here as well. Thank you.
Do you have a motion?
I'll move suggested.
Does there a second?
I'll second, and I have a question.
Mr. Pepcorn?
So, Mr. Chair, so Bruce, obviously, the red square, the addition, do you have a ballpark figure of what that is going to cost?
I'm going to have Jerry flash me the hand signs, but...
Be careful flashing hand signs.
I didn't mean that. More than I did several years ago when we did this for the ethanol plant, but Jerry, you're thinking 10? $10 million.
I'm not going to hold up any fingers for that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you for formality.
Ms. Fuhrman?
Mr. Preston?
So, Bruce, how does the financing with the plant actually happen? Is it paid upfront by the city and recuperated in user fees, or is it a special assessment kind of thing?
Excellent. Excellent question. We're trying to follow the Thurleton ethanol model, and Casserole Water will be financing all of the infrastructure improvements through an SRF loan, and the soybean processors will repay that in its entirety. That's the same model that we followed with the ethanol plant.
Including the addition to the plant?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you. I have a question, and I might follow up. Just for the sake of somebody who's new to this language, help me understand how much water will this plant need, and what's the future projection of their needs, and how's that compared to wastewater? I'll start with that.
That's a good question. On a daily basis, we return about 15 million gallons a day to the Red River. Thurleton ethanol required about a million of that, and the soybean crushing plant slightly less than a million of that. So still be returning 13 to 13 and a half million gallons per day back to the Red River.
Bear with me. Is that eff, what, the word effluent? Is that wastewater?
Yes. I apologize for that. What effluent means is, once it's been cleaned through the wastewater plant, when we discharge that back to the river, we refer to that as effluent.
How much prepared, regular water will they need, other than the effluent wastewater redirection?
Potable water?
Yeah.
Jerry, do you have a number on potable water? We're just working on the industrial component at this time.
It's a minimal amount.
You might want to go to the microphone, please. Sorry. Extremely small amount in terms of the industrial supply they're looking for.
It's just...
It's just so the public can hear.
It's basically domestic water, you know, drinking water, flushing toilets, that sort of thing.
So I'll ask my dumb question, just so I've asked it. We're in the motion just before this, and ongoingly with climate challenges, we're acknowledging the need for water and our fear of droughts, again. How assured are... How assured are we that this will not be a burden in the future on our freshwater needs for Fargo, or how do we know that's not an issue?
Well, the potable water to be used out in Castleton will come from their rural system. That will not be Fargo Water Treatment Plant water. We're just taking effluent that we'd otherwise put in the Red River, and it would go north into Canada. We're taking a small portion of that to use as industrial water, so it doesn't affect our drinking water supply.
And if we have a drought, that effluent will still continually be there relative to existing uses?
Yeah, we had to permit this effluent reuse for industrial water through the State Water Commission, and so it's got a junior permit status, and if drought conditions are such that the State Water Commission feels we have to reintroduce that water to the Red River, they'll shut that permit down.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other comments? Commissioner Preston.
One more question, so that I understand this effluent water, that is wastewater from the city of Fargo that's been reprocessed?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's a great way to use wastewater. They don't need it drinkable to go through the industrial site, so it's good, good usage. Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Garrick?
Yes.
Peppcar?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Bruce Krupp, you must really want to be on tonight. I guess can't get you off the podium there. Recommendation to amend the master service agreement to Inowatch Incorporated for the development and operation of ICR SR plan and a carbon dashboard for the city facilities. Bruce Krupp to explain as well.
Thank you. You'll be done with me in just a moment. But this item is really an extension of work that began more than 20 years ago, when we started collecting methane gas at our city landfill in 2001. The purpose of doing that back then was twofold, to eliminate the emissions, but also to add a diversified source of revenue for the city. And I gave a presentation to you at your December 28, 2020 commission meeting about the efforts that have been made over the years and are continuing to be made. That was the same meeting at which the Sustainability and Resiliency Committee was formed. And I'll just briefly, we, I mentioned back then that we categorized the efforts that have been made and are still being pursued into five areas. Climate resiliency, renewable energy, emissions reductions, energy efficiency, and environmental stewardship. And so again, just a quick refresher, I won't read through all of these efforts that are on the slide, but you can see climate resiliency, obviously flood protection, drought protection. In terms of renewable energy, we've got a number of efforts that we've pursued over the years, shown on this slide. In terms of emissions reductions, again, a number of efforts that have been made over the years. In terms of energy efficiency, a lot of work done in the area of energy efficiency. And then similarly, in terms of environmental stewardship, significant efforts made there as well. So that brings us to our July 13 Sustainability and Resiliency Committee meeting. The committee got an update or a presentation on the Roberts Commons Parking Garage, the Smart Energy Ramp project. And one of the things that we saw in the presentation was a carbon dashboard that was created for the garage. And the carbon dashboard was created to track emissions reductions achieved through the use of renewable energy features at the garage. It was very interesting to us because we've had something somewhat similar at the city landfill since the mid 2000s. That was basically a, an online converter that converted the landfill gas that was captured and destroyed, or the use of renewable energies at the landfill into equivalents such as vehicle miles driven, forest, reforestation, acres, those types of things. So we followed up with the presenters after the meeting and asked if they could assist us in establishing a carbon baseline for the city of Fargo. And they indicated that they could. The question is, where do you start? And so the recommendation was to start out with two or three city facilities, create carbon dashboards for them, and also to develop something called an infrastructure carbon reduction sustainability and resiliency plan to help us evaluate where each of those facilities is and what initiatives might make sense. So in other words, something like a strategic energy plan for city facilities. And so at this point, I would like to introduce Brian Tru with Inowatch, also involved with the Roco Smart Energy Ramp. And they'll run through the proposal here quickly, and then I'll finish up at the end. Are you on the line, Brian?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Commissioners, thank you very much for your time today. My name is Brian Tru. I'm the head of Inowatch Client Delivery and Engagement Team. It's truly an honor to present to you today. Your GO 2030 Plan is clearly evidence of your commitment to sustainability, and in this project, we'll be outlining the role that Inowatch and our partner with the Alliance Risk Group can play in helping to further drive strategic energy planning across city infrastructure. Next slide. Next slide. In today's presentation, I'll give you a very brief overview of Inowatch. I'll then walk you through the proposal for the carbon dashboards and infrastructure carbon reduction plans, as Bruce mentioned, as well as throughout provide you some brief views into the dashboard wireframes that we've prepared. Next slide. Next slide. Energy analytics is at the core of what we do at Inowatch. We support multiple use cases across the energy verticals, supporting both utilities, retail energy providers, as well as municipalities. Leveraging granular data in conjunction with our core big data analytics and artificial intelligence is the objective for this project in order to help drive initiatives associated with grid edge management and the ability to measure the carbon reduction based on clean energy investments made by the city. Next slide. Inowatch is an established company. We currently have 45 million meters under our platform or on our platform. You can think of a meter as equivalent to either a residential house or a commercial office building, and we are active in multiple markets across the world and have experience working with very complex and large data. You can see there as well an example of the types of customers that we currently do business with. Obviously, we have existing business with city of Fargo as a part of the Roco Ramp, as well as work we do with other utilities and retail energy providers. Next slide. I'll now go into the project's deliverables. So with this project, the premise here is essentially, one cannot change or affect what one does not measure. By establishing the measurements through these project deliverables, we will provide the city a summary carbon footprint dashboard or carbon intensity dashboard that will allow the city to establish a baseline for all sites that are included within the program, as well as to provide detailed, or to provide dashboards that could be presented on the city's website to demonstrate the effectiveness of clean energy investments. We will also be providing detailed dashboards to provide the summary, pardon me, to provide the details behind the summary dashboards, so that the staff at the city can understand the effectiveness of individual investments made, for example, in EV charging stations, solar, or other types of carbon reduction programs. In conjunction with these dashboards, we will also be working in concert with the Alliance Risk Group in order to drive strategic energy planning through the Infrastructure Carbon Reduction Sustainability and Resiliency Plan for two to three sites, in addition to providing a high-level citywide plan to guide infrastructure funding proposals. These deliverables will, deliverables are to be enabled with, on the Inowatch platform, both for city staff use, as well as to be embedded within the city of Fargo website for external presentation. This project will be delivered through the same team that delivered the Roco project, both including Inowatch, as well as the Alliance Risk Group. Next slide. Very briefly, here's an example of the types of dashboards that we would be able to provide that really simplifies a very complex process of measuring baseline energy use, the carbon generated through that baseline energy, and then the effectiveness of the offsets. In this example, the offset through solar generation, and then the offset through EV charging as a way of being able to measure, in this case for the Robert Commons Ramp, what the overall net carbon footprint is. And this is an example of what we could do across other sites that the city selects. Next slide. The targeted sites for carbon reduction dashboards and presentment, this is an example of the types of sites that are being considered and that we have had discussions on how to collect the data and the data required in order to support the dashboards as described. Ultimately, the city will select the sites, and Inowatch and the Risk Alliance Group will work in conjunction with the city in order to establish the dashboards, as well as to support the infrastructure carbon reduction plans. Next slide. There's certainly roles both across Inowatch, as well as the Risk Alliance Group, and the city will have a critical role as a part of this project as well, in addition to site selection, in order to assist us in identifying the input data that is available, based on the types of clean energy investments the city plans to make, as well as to ensure that we're able to receive that information on a timely basis, and then, as needed, to inform us of equipment changes or other changes that may be made in your clean energy investments at the sites that are selected. The delivery process is meant to just provide a representation of the types of information that we've already identified as being required in order to support this program. Next slide. The Infrastructure Carbon Reduction Sustainability and Resiliency Plan is intended to target two to three facilities jointly selected with the city in order to outline ways in which the city can further reduce carbon from those sites, or otherwise make strategic energy plan decisions in order to maximize the benefit of the clean energy investments. Next slide. The implementation schedule has us operational with regards to the dashboards within three months. After that period of time, we would then be continuing to work with the city to produce those dashboards, as well as to continue to iterate on the infrastructure carbon reduction and sustainability plans. Next slide. The contracting approach and fee structure, since Inowatch and the city of Fargo already have an existing business relationship, we are proposing that Inowatch would serve as prime to Fargo, with us subcontracting the Alliance Risk Group in order to support the dashboard definition, methods of calculation, as well as the infrastructure carbon reduction plan. We would propose an amendment to the existing Inowatch Fargo agreement to add the additional scope in commercial terms. With regards to the cost of the project, there would be an initial payment of 114,000 from the city to Inowatch for the dashboard development and plans, and as well as some operating expense coverage. And then, beginning June 1, 2023, there would then be a aggregate fee of $5,000 a month, 3,000 for the additional dashboards that we have created, in addition to the 2,000 that the city is already paying for the, for the Roco dashboard. Thank you very much for your time. With that, Bruce, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Brian. I think I'd like to wrap it up here. The cost for the carbon dashboard creations and the ICR SR plans, along with one year of software support, 114,000 dollars. The suggested source of funding is the solid waste utility. They recently expanded the gas collection wellfield at the city landfill, and the project was completed about 160,000 dollars under budget, and we would like to utilize those savings to pay for this effort, in part because the first dashboard will be created for the landfill, and they're anxious to see that. So the suggested motion is shown on this screen to approve a sole source procurement contract addendum with Inowatch for the development and operation of an ICR SR plan and carbon dashboard for city facilities. So we would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Could I have a motion?
I make the recommended motion, Mayor.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Strand, you had a comment as well?
I have a, a comment, kind of, and a question. You know, oftentimes, we assume people know what we're talking about, and, and it's easy when we're so far down the path to, to just kind of know where we're at. But the governor of North Dakota has declared, for example, that by 2030, his, his goal is for North Dakota to be carbon neutral. So this is a real driving force. For us laypeople out there, I'm not sure who can answer. Tell us why, tell, what's it matter? What's this whole carbon thing all about? I mean, you know, people, they don't know, what's, what is this? Why? What's it, what's it going to do? What's carbon do?
I'm not a scientist. But depending on what you read, carbon is what's leading to what's perceived as a change in climate. And so some of the resiliency efforts, the other thing, when we in 2001 started collecting methane at the city landfill, in terms of carbon, methane is 25 times more destructive than CO2 itself. So we've been in this business for a while. It, we wanted to eliminate emissions, but it also provided a business opportunity for us. So we just see this as an extension of that type of work. We'd like to look at the opportunity to lower emissions, also become more energy efficient, possibly save money at the same time.
Any other comments? Mr. Strand.
I'll continue. You know, it's, it's a, there's a theme starting to surface here with Fargo and these actions of, of, of climate resiliency. You know, we're, we're preparing for floods. We're preparing for droughts. We're, we're looking at climate action needs, and we're finding out, how do we get the data so we can act responsibly locally to do our part? You know, this, this really does all add up. We are, yeah, we're in North Dakota where we have an immense amount of fossil fuel industry, and we, it's here. It's where our energy comes from for the moment. That's where we got it from. So at the minimum, and I, you know, the governor's message is to, to, to go at that carbon footprint and reduce it. And in fact, their vision is to reduce way more carbon than, 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 than we're creating, but, and bringing it from multiple states around. But this is really significant action. Those people who say out there, oh, you need to, you need to initiate a, a, a climate emergency resolution. Well, that's basically saying we're aware of these issues, and we're going to act on them. These actions speak loudly. You know, it's not just a proclamation when we prepare for floods, when we prepare for droughts, and we start gathering data to act further with regards to our carbon footprint. These actions speak volumes. Thank you, Bruce, for your leadership on this front also.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner Peppcar.
You have a quick comment. To me, 114,000 dollars to set it up, and then 5,000 dollars a month for a dashboard, I think we have a lot of better ways to spend money. And so to me, obviously, we had the speakers earlier talking about, we have a lot of real issues going on, and to me, this is wasteful spending. So I'll be voting no.
Commissioner Preston.
And I'll counter that with, I think the dashboard is one of the more exciting pieces of this, to start to get the community more aware of the whole issues that you were talking about, Commissioner Strand. So the dashboard is, is very exciting.
Mr. Garrick.
Bruce, you kind of touched on it, but it's conceivable that having this information can help us in reducing costs at the landfill, sewer plant, and things like that in the future. Is that what the hope is?
That is the hope, yes.
I mean, Dave, I thought the same thing when I saw this. I'm like, you know, 114 grand plus thousands of dollars a month. Are we doing anything other than feel-good stuff? And that's, I mean, I believe Bruce when he says that. I think that initially, when we were capturing gas at the landfill and those type of things, that was a feel-good thing that we were doing at the time. And then we made it, we partnered with people in the community, and then people are actually buying that gas now. So it's these things that we do that may initially feel like just whatever, you know? But I really do think that, I believe Bruce when he says, that hopefully this will pay for itself in the future.
Mr. Peppcar.
I fully support, you know, making the buildings more efficient, doing all the things we can do to save money, all that stuff, without a doubt. 5,000 dollars a month, Tony, that's, that's a lot. Multiply that over many years for a dashboard. That, that's what catches me. That's a lot of money. Once again, I'm all about us being efficient and, and using our resources wisely, but that's a whole lot of money just for something to, to look at, and so that's my comments. Thank you.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you. Bruce, just for a point of clarification, as I recall, of that 5,000, it's a really good conversation to have, but 2,000 of that's already committed, isn't it?
Yes.
For the Roco, so it's really an addition of 3,000 on top of, to that, so it's, brings it up to five. Just to clarify that.
Ms. Preston?
And to me, it's an issue of transparency. The public can see it.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Preston? Yes. Garrick?
Yes.
Horn?
No.
Mahoney?
I will take a five-minute break, come back at 10, or 6:15, and then be ready for Nicole. Thank you. Calling back to order. First, Ken Costa was an excellent administrative partner for us, but Bruce Krab, those were good presentations. Thank you very much for that. It's amazing to me, when we first came out on wastewater, what we can do with, and Thorson Plant came along, little did we know that that was a revenue source for the city as well. And using e-fluent, we never thought that would happen. So, it's really good that we look for opportunities to increase revenue of the city as well. Tonight, we have an update on affordable housing properties. Nicole Crutchfield offered to do this to help us just clarify this area and market, because we've had a lot of different peoples come forth and discuss it, and she volunteered as part of the planning department to give us some of the housing priorities and what her thoughts are. Thank you, Nicole.
Thanks, Mayor. And, yeah, you'll notice on the agenda, it says properties, and actually, I'm talking about priorities. So, just to clarify that, so if anybody came for exact properties, that's not the discussion quite today. Also, I should say, volunteering to give a presentation is probably not a good thing to do for a Monday night, but I did want to offer for the city commission, we do, you know, the testimony that's come forward as part of the RFPs, the Joint Renaissance Zone Economic Development Initiative or Incentive Committee, a few weeks ago, had a lot of discussion, and it seemed like there was a lot of questions about affordability, housing, things that the planning department's working on. And so, I thought I would give a pretty high-level presentation, and I do have a lot of slides here. I was trying to get it to the basics, and I would suggest maybe a brown bag might be a more appropriate topic if you want to go deeper. So, I'll just, you know, stop me or tell me we're done or whatever as I kick off here. So, for today, I wanted to give a little overview on our structure and our work in the department when it comes to housing, some of the recent studies and our assessments and findings, and what we're working on as part of our work plan for '22. This is a chart I started to put together, and I'll explain it. And basically, each of these orange buttons or honeycombs are different committees that the city planning staff and that we work with when it comes to things like housing. And the Community Development Committee focuses on human and social service administration and housing as it relates to that. The Renaissance Zone Authority relates to redevelopment of certain blocks in downtown based on the state statute. The Economic Development Incentive Committee looks at the application of tax incentive programs. The Planning Commission implements all of these big-picture goals through legal entitlements. And then, we have the Parking Commission, who's a little defunct right now during, since 2020, but has historically had a big lead in downtown development. And the pink honeycombs are basically the studies that have, that we've been doing and how they support the work of these different committees. And the ones, like the HUD Five-Year Plan and the Renaissance Zone Plan, those are state-mandated or federal-mandated plans, but the rest of us, the studies have been provided to us thanks to the city's leadership and resources to hiring consultants. When we have the spin-off ad hoc committees, those are the green, we struggle with that because we don't know how they fit in the network. And when we're on the fly, creating a committee mid-process, it also causes a lot of confusion as well. And so, the last several weeks, I think, as we kind of spun off on some ad hoc committees related to the RFP process in downtown, caused some internal coordination with the staff. A little bit on the RFP, I won't spend a lot of time on that, but the next item on the agenda, but just for the public's understanding, the Renaissance Zone Authority and the Economic Development Incentive Committee came together to look at those applications, provide those reviews, and then the CD Committee came on as since affordable housing started becoming a topic in the discussion. And so, a little bit of how we got where we're at today with writing the downtown specific proposals. And I should say, Jim and his group has been leading that, along with Commissioner Peckhorn, and so, planning department really did not have a role in that RFP process, so I just wanted to mention that as well. In the discussion, there's been a lot of discussion on what does the Community Development Committee do, you know, what have they been working on? And just as a quick highlight, they were established in 1997 to work on downtown development, neighborhood development, affordable housing. That was pre-Renaissance Zone, pre a lot of other activities. In today's day, and in the kind of modernization of that committee, recently, since I've become the director in 2018, we've restructured the 20-year program of the Social Service Funds and pivoted towards larger initial investments or new American-focused work. In 2019, we really restructured HUD and CBG funds to be more impactful since we needed to spend down two and a half times our funds for a timeliness test. And then, in 2020, of course, was the pandemic, but one of the wins that going into 2020 was a housing transfer. So, basically, the Wapperton units were transferred to, the community homes, Wapperton units were transferred to the Fargo region, and that process of bringing on two more, 200 more affordable units. In 2021, thanks to the CARES Funds and other response to the pandemic, we really focused on a deeper understanding of the housing, what I call the housing continuum, and allocated over six times the funds we normally get. And in '22, we'll have three times as many projects as we normally do, and you'll see, actually, in a few weeks, Tia will be in front of you with a '22 action plan, and you'll see, you know, kind of minimum project thresholds at the $200,000 mark. And so, one of the things that we should indicate as, in terms of grant administration, administering a $15,000 project or $200,000 project is the same amount of work and facilitation, if you will, with the public and/or the organizations. So, how do all these plans work together? I will highlight all of these, and these will be available, but basically, you can see a series of time periods and what their focus was. And one plan led to the other. The Go2030 led to the, and focused led to the neighborhood plan, and so on. Right now, you heard a lot of discussion about the Fargo-Moorhead Metro Housing Plan, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. Also, just a little 101 on the planning work. We go from big picture to kind of micro. So, that Go2030 is that larger strategic work, and we focus all the way down to that land development code. And all of them talk about housing and different types of housing, and then the sidebar's off to the side in terms of MetroCog or federal, state, city policies, all as that interacts with housing. It's very dynamic. And so, as I mentioned to Commissioner Preston, it's, there's not a day that goes by that we're not thinking about housing or how housing integrates as a major land use. The resources we use for our analysis and work is, we have the housing study in 2015. While it was done in 2015, it does have a projection to 2021, and so, actually, there is still good data in the 2015 study. We obviously use state and HUD resources, the census. We've done four department-focused studies as we dig in deeper, and we also use a platform called My Sidewalk, which is a query of thousands of data sets that helps us geographically map those. And then, we have the upcoming MetroCog study. And I should say, with the MetroCog study, the City of Fargo is the primary funder. It's actually going to be generally funded, but we are just as interested in the metro information because what happens in Horace affects us or Dilworth. And if you think about growth management as a water balloon, and if you squeeze here or put a policy here, the growth is going to go there, et cetera. So, we really want to understand how people are living. So, I won't read these, and I'll provide these to you electronically, and we'll post this on the city website afterwards. But really, as we get into affordable housing definitions, as we move forward, you'll see me and my staff get a little bit more specific. As we hear questions and comments and testimony, we want to know, what are we really talking about as we identify a problem? All of these definitions are in the housing industry and are used in HUD funding programs. And so, we want to, again, really make sure we know what we're talking about. For instance, workforce housing, typically, it's housing aimed at 60% to 120% AMI, average median income, and really, average median income is just, you know, 50% above that and 50% below that. That's average median income. And so, 80% of that average or 30% of that average. And so, that's how we get into those different definitions of income levels. One of the things you'll hear me talk a lot about is permanent supportive housing, and I'll move forward from that. So, I know this slide is hard to read, but we came up with this in 2020 as part of the work on the CARES Funds, but really, the partners that we work with in our community, we really are wanting to talk about the housing continuum. So, if you, on the left-hand side, you have market rate. So, you know, average income making above median income, buying a house or an apartment at market rate. And then, if you go from left to right, you have, we're really, you know, looking at metrics related to ownership and rental ratios. We're looking at the 60% to 80% AMI. These are all the partners in our community that we work with, our projects that are on the queue, the Engagement Center, the Supportive Housing Prevention and Diversion Program, which is where we're trying to interject before someone becomes homeless, and then the Overflow Shelter, which has been running at overcapacity in terms of all of our shelters. And then, from the Covert Core Neighborhood Plan, housing stabilization. When we look at the funds that are allocated to the City of Fargo from the FUDs, the pink bar is basically through the HUD funds, we spread those across these programs below. And when I have the 25%, 95%, that means our partnership. So, if we look at the Engagement Center, if it weren't for the City of Fargo, the Engagement Center wouldn't even be a concept. And so, 95% of the function of the Engagement Center right now is City of Fargo-supported, whereas supportive housing or the prevention and diversion, I would say, is 50% funded through Fargo. We are completely dependent on the state, United Way, First Link, those functions. And so, you can see the City of Fargo's role when it comes to these. You won't see the planning department listed under market rate because we're not using HUD funds for market rate, as well as there's all sorts of people working on the market and economy level, and that's really more of a outcome, if you will. And we're there to help with entitlements and looking at available lot maps, Go2030, looking at the rate of return on investment, the coordination with schools, and the MetroCog's, you know, quality of life analysis. One of the things we've started working on is how do we get more metrics behind these numbers? How do, what's the census of these different categories? And how do we use the, how many people are we talking about? All of these numbers have been very dynamic over the years, and there's a mishmash of softwares or program, computer programs, and so, we're trying to really get a handle of how we can make our data talk to each other. So, this is really draft, don't really look at these numbers too closely, but this is what we're trying to work on in '22, is get down into the details. So, this is a super-busy slide, and I apologize, but a little bit how we work. So, when we spin off and add an ad hoc subcommittee, I certainly understand the interests of our citizen advisory boards, but at the staff level, we're already at this question of, you know, how do we get to some of these questions? And we actually have spin-off work groups as we try to work on these types of questions. And so, for instance, why can't developers build 4% Lytec credit? What is the funding gap there? We've had probably five or six developers try at it and back off for one reason or another. And so, you know, what is that work group? So, that work group could be BSI, local developers, state legislators. And so, me and Tia and Catlin are probably on about five different work groups based on different housing topics. And since we're constantly mushing this, how do we get this information to you and synthesize in a way? And honestly, until last week was really the first week that I've come out of the pandemic in response to just kind of triage on a daily basis at our office and been able to close my door and spend time on housing discussions. And so, that's why I offered to the mayor and the city commission is like, okay, I think I can get my head around this, perhaps, and have a decent presentation for you on Monday, if that helps. A little bit how our plans work and how we're constantly using them on a daily basis. So, I hear things like, the plans sit on the shelf, and as staff, we take a lot of offense to that because we use these plans every day, and like the Core Neighborhood Plan right now, the bind, I'm already losing the binding on it. And so, as an example, this is out of, this is one of my favorite maps out of the Go2030 study. study. And that's really where the aha moment came, is, you know, how far apart are our jobs and our housing? And so, the red dots represent jobs, and the orange drops, orange dots represent jobs and housing in the same proximity, and then the orange dots are housing. And so, you can see this demarcation of kind of a diagonal line. And so, all the jobs are on the northwest, and all the housing is on the southeast. And we want to blend that, right? And so, so again, that's an initiative. Off to the right is our Take Away from the Neighborhoods aspect of the Go 2030, our comprehensive plan and things that we're working on related to housing. And you'll see quality new development, infill, housing for workforce, and low-income residents. So these have all been topics and high priorities since this was adopted in 2012 and even before that because there's different policies. Out of the Downtown and Focus Plan, we really realized we have, you know, lots of options for our families, and we have options for retirees and empty nesters, but this, you know, missing middle of duplexes, quads, townhomes, live workspaces, there's a lot of room for innovation in that land use type. And also, in the Downtown and Focus Plan, we really realized for the downtown to be really functioning to its highest level, we know we need surrounding neighborhoods to support that. So really, the surrounding neighborhoods in that housing market and how it interrelates with the downtown is very synchronized together. So that led us into the Core Neighborhood Study. As you know, that was just adopted in '21. One of the highlights from that, on the map to the left, you'll see the pink area, and we did a market study as part of the Core Neighborhood Plan. And we had to study the whole city in order to understand what in isolation is the core. And so, on the south side, you see the bright pink, and you see the different shades of blue and grays, and then the dark blue. So in terms of performance at market, on the dark pink is performing well above the market. If you look at the lighter colors, it starts to get below average, and the dark blue is well below average. And so, we know we want to kind of double down in this area and figure out what's going on and how we can turn that around, which is the whole goals of the 20-some goals that come out of the Core Neighborhood Plan. We also see the average sale price and the disparity of incomes and wealth. And so, the average, oops, the average house sale, you know, is in that darker blue, higher-priced, lighter blue, lighter gray, lower-priced. And so, you'll see some of these markets. So the way to do these kind of maps gets really complicated because you can't just take, basically, about 20 years ago, the census reports went from being, I went, I'm a generation of planners that could pull a report off the shelf, look at it, and then map it. And now, the data and how the software all works gets pretty complicated. And so, and you have all these vendors that are selling the software, and that's where we proprietarily purchase the My Sidewalk software. We're getting better at that. We've got some new staff on board that can help us dig in deeper, but all of these maps have to be created and allocated individually. These are super high-level, but you know, when I hear where is the data or what is the data, we're going to get a lot more of that from MetroCog study, but just a few top-level things, I won't read these all, but on average, in Fargo, we're spending about 25% on housing, of our income on housing, and in downtown, it's 21% of their income on housing. And that's pretty good. We want to stay, you know, if you get in that 30% mark, then, you know, we're, we've got a bit of a problem. When we're looking at the wage, high wage, there's high wage, medium wage, and low wage. And so, how do those classified in Fargo? Really, about a third of our population is in the high wage arena. About a third is in the medium wage, and a third of population is in the low wage. And so, that's how some of this data starts to show up. And, you know, these lines, it's hard to read it, but basically, in the metro area, we know about 13% are living below the poverty line. Jump around here. 1,200, we know 1,200 units are, people in downtown spend more than 30% of their income on housing. We know 70% of them are renters. And we know some of the work, information we're getting from First Link, we know that 61% of the requests that came in for assistance last year is for rental assistance and so, and/or deposits. So we know that number is rising. In terms of federal support in housing, there's 58 properties where 2,300 units are assisted in Fargo that have rental assistance programs built in or vouchers. In downtown, we know we have about 2,300 people living downtown. We know that about 25,000 commute in for work. We know the kind of average rent at 51,000 is, so we're looking at wages, and $51,000 wage, for instance, can afford a 1,200 a month apartment. And again, these are kind of that 30% breakdown. We've added 600 units in downtown since 2000. That number might be a little off recently. And then the median home rent in downtown is $821. We just published a Maxfield, I call it the Maxfield Study, but we partnered with Beyond Shelter. And one of the things, as we get into the deeper need and permanent supportive housing and affordability, and I'll just go on record from, I mentioned this a few weeks ago in our brown bag, but at the staff level, we really feel like our energy is best spent on the permanent supportive housing or trying to figure out what that is, because it's definitely a need across the country. Nobody across the country has really cracked that nut, and we're really trying to, Cooper House is really about all we've got as part of that program. And so, we're really trying to figure out how, and in my personal mind, Cooper House has some improvements to make. And so, we're really trying to figure out how to get at that. When we look at 75% of homelessness, for instance, they're repeat customers, if you will, repeat guests. So we have a chronic repeat bounce. So we're housing people quickly, but they're coming back out of housing ASAP. And so, we want to just figure out what's happening there. And I won't read all these, but basically, I'll send these to you so you have them. We have our numbers from the Infocus study, and we know we have about 3,400 people living downtown metro-wide. So again, this is at the metro level. We know there's 41% of renters that are cost burden, are paying more than 30%. And one of the findings from the Infocus study was to be cautious of not becoming a resort town. And so, as we try to figure out what that, you know, disposable income is, if you have a bunch of students and you have people who are in a higher income, you know, how do you have that daytime population for, you know, keeping retail floating? The one thing that is kind of, oops, the one thing that's happening at a national level is, I don't know what's happening here. The one thing that's happening in a national, and I'm almost done here, that's happening at a national level is just this definition alone of affordable housing. The HUD definition doesn't take into account inflation, student debt, medical, other impacts to budget. And so, when you tend, as a user, you tend to look at this number, like what I could qualify for personally to buy in my good salary, I'm like, that's crazy, right? I wouldn't spend that much money because I have this other debt, right? And so, how do those lifestyle balances, that doesn't really get captured anywhere, and it doesn't really get captured in the housing industry either. And so, that's kind of an anomaly. Our consultant that's working on the Maxfield, you know, the Maxfield Agency is actually on a program in the Twin Cities where they're, where they're actually trying to unpack that and get in a deeper dive. Because to promote new housing and to fill the gaps in continuum, we know there is a financial gap, no matter if it's market rate or, you know, subsidized housing. And so, the cost of building and the cost of subsidizing is getting larger. And the recommendation from the Infocus and also from the Maxfield Study is to focus our energy if we're going to be subsidizing on that 60% to 80% AMI, because nobody's funding that. And so, so one of the asks, real quick, and I'll conclude, is, so what are we doing? What is the Planning Department doing? And I could go deeper in all those numbers, but really, it's, we're funding the MetroCog study. There's participation by the other depart, by other agencies, but the Fargo is the heavier sponsor on that. We'll be selecting a consultant hopefully in the next two weeks. We are, we've got a joint staff work group that Commissioner Strand and Beyond Shelter helps us with, along with Cass County representatives, as we try to dig into what is that funding and operation quandaries in supporting, permanent supportive housing. We ask for your support as we continue on housing and homelessness in our home and HUD funds, and then Growth Plan, COP Plan, Comprehensive Plan, the LDC update, they all plan to have housing as a primary topic. I'd also like to, I've been trying to get a national consultant. There's about four in town, or four in the somewhat region between the Twin Cities, Denver, and the West Coast, that I've been trying to get here to Fargo and can't even get them to return my call, because this is a nationwide crisis. And so, we're not the only city dealing with this, of course. And then also, how these things stack together. So at the staff level, those work groups kind of split out to, first of all, we don't really have a community-wide shelter strategic plan, our COC collaboration at a metro-wide level. We have the Core Neighborhood Plan work as we get ready to kick off trying to get that redevelopment authority, that group that's going to help invest in single-family houses. There's a, you know, kind of group that we're trying to figure out, you know, this 4% Lytech question, permanent supportive housing operations finance, the regional housing, all of that comes into building, you know, a Fargo-focused housing strategic plan. So I think that was it. So I'm not sure if that helps at all, but provide just some background.
So I assume you'll send this out to all the commissioners?
Yes.
Great presentation, really has taken a lot into account, whatever. Any questions? Commissioner Preston?
So Nicole, at the Joint Economic Development Group and Renaissance Zone Authority, we had a conversation about how can we get a handle on all this, and you and I had had some conversation about, this is like additional work over and beyond, perhaps, some of the things that you're currently doing. And this was, this was really a good summary of what you already have in place. But in regard to the structure inside the city hall, and whether it's the CDC or Renaissance Zone Authority or Economic Development Group, we had indicated that it wasn't real clear where this policy-level discussion should be happening. And just want to, you and I had talked a little bit about perhaps bringing on some kind of facilitator slash consultant. Are you still there? Is that what would be helpful?
Yeah, I think so. I think I'm trying to get, yes, it would be helpful. I guess I'm trying to get an understanding of where we want to go. Right now, we're still trying to identify the problem. And, and so, you know, there's a little bit of, you know, so I guess, in all honesty, you know, the testimony and the conversation at the joint meeting, I wouldn't say got off-topic, but was, got a little surprising to off-policy or off, I know they're important. And I think, well, let me just say, I think the question at the table is, I think the policy question, and if the EDC group wants to take it on or we want to talk about it broader, is how are we going to fund that? What's the city's skin in the game beyond federal dollars for affordable housing? And I think that's the question at hand, because we know there's a huge gap. And, and how to get to that answer, I don't really know.
If I could continue, Mr. Chairman. So, yeah, I mean, we're, I think, finding, like you mentioned, we're finding ourselves in the same place a lot of other cities are finding themselves, which is that lower-income worker is having, struggling more and more to be able to afford housing. With the numbers that you showed us, that's real evident. So when we were talking about how to approach this, data is one piece, and you've got a really good start with that, with this presentation. We talked about financing, what role does the city play in, what do we bring to the table to ensure that these lower-end income workforce housing happens? We've talked about placement. Your, I liked your map with the different circles on it, which shows, yeah, you know, the more we can get workers close to employment centers, the less they're going to have to have cars. Maybe that will help with their overall kind of expense pattern. We've also talked about the management of the services, that some of those housing options require. And then finally, developers that will step into this space. So, you know, it just feels like, right now, we don't have that kind of group looking at that overall kind of overarching picture. And so, you know, I'm ready to make a motion that we bring in somebody to help us get there, if that's where you're coming from.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I'll take any and I'll help. And I think it's, you know, one of my, I guess, dreams and is, you know, kind of trying to get a work group, you know, you see all those little spin-off work groups, those are all ad hoc, but you know, where is there, you know, kind of a methodology around the table and who's leading that conversation? And how can we gather, you know, the kind of conversations I'm in at a staff level is, you know, people like with Chris, you know, I'll point to Chris, but you know, kind of the people that are, that got their hands in the, in the clay and building the thing. And so, we're really deep down in the kind of technical aspects and trying to pull that out to come up with larger strategies. And you're, you know, like, what is a good number for Fargo? What do we, you know, what's our goal? And I think trying to get that goal identification and its correlated policies, I think there's a good place for that. I think in about eight months, we'll get, you know, the housing study information. I think that's going to tell us a lot from the MetroCog, you know, study. I don't want to put all my eggs in that basket because there's going to be more work from that, but I think trying to, one, identify the problem, which problem we're trying to solve, because there's about eight of them, and then trying to figure out the strategy for that problem and your, the commissioner's goals and how you want to go about that.
You know, Nicole.
I'm open to anything.
Perhaps. Commissioner Strand's working on supportive housing as well. That's a big question. There's working on housing, different things that are here. Would it make sense for Commissioner Strand, Commissioner Preston to work with you to figure out what expert you want? Because you're trying to define where we're supposed to go. We do have money in low-income housing. We have three projects. The city of Fargo is helping subsidize as it presently sits. You're putting HUD money into a variety of things in the community. But for this discussion, would it make sense that maybe, John, you're looking at a different segment that's critical in our homeless population, supportive housing, you're looking for work housing? So is there somewhere in between when you're trying to give us directives? I know your study won't be done for eight months, but is there something in the interim you'd least get together and try to figure out who that expert is?
Yeah, I mean, I think trying to figure out where that consensus is, I think. Right, you know, the way our governance is structured, yeah, I'm kind of flying blind.
Well, I'm just saying, you brought great points today. We might have to do a brown bag luncheon or something to talk about it further.
Yeah, well, that's what I was going to say. Maybe that's the next step to open the brown bag, because there's so many experts in our community that actually are doing, building the buildings, you know, and trying to fund it, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I could say, this, I think, really requires some outside help, because it's difficult, I think, for staff to clearly tell us that we're messing things up, kind of, with all of the various approaches and the various advisory boards that we have in place. So. So I'm good with, you know, trying to figure that out here. But it would be, I think, important to bring someone in to help us get through this, to clarify what is the problem? What is our goal? Otherwise, we're going to have 20 different goals, 20 different problems.
Well, I will say is, you know, not to, sorry to cut you off. And I know Commissioner Preston, or Popcorn had a comment. I will say, so I was on the selection committee for the housing consultants for the Fargo MetroCog. And we'll be interviewing them next week. I'd say we had two, I don't know if it's public knowledge, but we have two finalists who are, you know, knock-your-sox-off kind of brilliant people. And it's that economist plus planner combined. And, and actually both know the region. And, and what I would say is, let me get that scope of work kind of finalized with that and bring that either back to here, to a brown bag and where we can dive in deeper with, that would be one recommendation. That could probably be done in, at the end of April, early May, at the, at the latest. And, because I think we're going to hear, we're going to learn a lot from that MetroCog study. And especially when it comes to affordability and where the gaps are. And so, because, and then they, they're able to bring in their national expertise on what's happening nationwide. And the reason, just for the public who's listening, you know, we're in a, I hate the word crisis because I've worked in real crises, tornadoes and things. And it's a different kind of crisis. But I think, you know, we, the housing market hasn't recovered from the '07 recession, '08 recession. We know we're a million, when we talk about permanent supportive housing at a national level, there's a million short of people being provided permanent supportive housing. We know policies from the '60s are showing up today in a different way. And so there's so much complexity in all of this that they can explain it in a lot better way than I can.
Mr. Popcorn.
So, Mr. Chair, just a couple of things. The first thing is the housing study. That's, that's the first thing that has to happen. We have to get that because everything is kind of off that. But if you look at all the different groups, this is way more than just a brown bag for an hour. I think we have to consider some type of, of meeting or however, and I know it's, it's going to get thrown on Nicole's lap, so I'm sure she's not excited. But this has to be a combination of all the, the different entities. And it's, it's an unbelievable number of, of different groups that y'all have to be in the same room and talk about this. It has to be after the housing study. But then the other thing is, we have to have a simple number, like the GO 2030, where we had, how many, how many apartment, how many housing units in the downtown is our goal? Do, do you remember that? I, I like simple stuff. I'm not that smart of a guy. But that was our goal. Here's what we needed in the downtown. Here's how many units we need to add. So then that helps us as a, as a political group to guide our actions. So to me, let's, let's try to keep them simple. And, but, but this is a big thing that's not just Fargo either. It has to be a regional thing. But also, I mean, the Fargo Housing Authority, Beyond Shelter, all these different groups who we already work with, they all have to be in the room at the same time. So God bless you. I don't know how you're going to organize that, but that's what needs to happen. We need to have some type of regional meeting all at one time. And here's our, anyway, that's.
Well, and the reason, I should say, thank you for that, Commissioner. And the reason we're investing in the housing study is because nobody believes the data and nobody believes the numbers. I can talk to them blue in the face and, and nobody believes it. And everybody comes from their experiential level of experiences. And so when we can have someone dissect it, process it, and spit it back out, and also listen to the public and the community needs on top of it, which I would say the housing study is going to have public input. What's going to be fabulous about it is every jurisdiction is participating. And so, in fact, one of the scope elements of it is that we want the person to be able to do a chamber, eggs and issues based on what their findings are, so we can get the information communicated. And, and so that is, you know, part of the mix. And I will, since we're at budget time, I will say, we also have to remember, this is maybe for the public if they're listening, the city planning department is funded to work on daily operations. That means permits and HUD administration. 80% of our work is on that. This is 20% along with everything else we're doing on a strategic level. So you've charged me to do a comprehensive plan, a growth plan update, and a land development code update, which are all going to take three to five years at least and probably at least a million and a half dollars of investment. This problem is bigger than all of that. And so I think you're right. We need this roundtable task force, mayor's blue ribbon, call it whatever. But it's, but first, we need to know if we have a problem. I know we have a problem based on the testimony we have. And we know we have a problem based on the housing authorities' findings. And, you know, I saw their budget, this will be my plug for the housing authority. I saw their budget the other day and was shocked that, you know, how are they meant to survive on that when their budget is less than my budget? You know, and so it's, I think it's, it's a nationwide issue. And again, there's national experts who can get us out of this range. You know, we're not a Seattle, we're not a Colorado Springs, we're not a, you know, San Francisco. But we know we can, the good news is it can be managed. And the problem is, is we're all working on our own different silos and own all different soapboxes. And so we have to get strategic, coordinated. And there has to be a champion, there has to be a coordinator, and there has to be a lead facilitator that everybody can trust. And it's not me that everybody trusts.
Well, I think we have a lot of trust in a lot of the things you've told us tonight. So thank you very much. Nicole, we could go on and on, but I'd like to get the agenda done. So I presume you have some ideas of where you go. I'll call on Commissioner Strand for the final comments. And then I think we'll continue with the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. You're optimistic that these will be the final comments. This is a really big issue. This is a huge issue. And, you know, and I, I, I'll own up to, sometimes you learn as you're going down a path and things surface and you go, oops. You know, we approved and decided to do a renewal plan for downtown. And then we approved and agreed to put three public properties up to the, to the public for RFPs to get developed that are, some would say riverfront property, some are. You know, a few weeks back in February, our Tishler Vice White Paper, if I'm taking the name right, one of the major things they told us is, guard your riverfront property. You know, be careful with it. You only have, it's a limited quantity, you know? And we've, we've done this process and we've opened up three properties, asked for bids, things that we should have incorporated into it, we didn't. You know, for example, we have our own studies, which say, for example, primary goal, preserve housing affordability to keep downtown within reach of low and working-income housings. These are in our own strategic plans that we've all agreed to and affixed our, our names to. Okay? Then sub, sub under that, this, use city-owned land to encourage the inclusion of affordable housing and affordable workspace in private development. Reserve and select publicly-owned properties for the development of income-restricted housing for families below 60% of area median income. And there are subsets to all this, and we didn't do this. We didn't look at these own, our own goals when we asked for these. And I'm not blaming anybody. I'm owning up to this myself. I wished I had known better, but I, I'd know better now, I think. I have more questions than anything. You know, the, growing up on the farm, the way we'd say it is, the horses are out of the barn. Now what? We've already awarded one of those three properties. We've got another one, the next item on the agenda tonight is another one of those properties. It's downtown, it's riverfront property. And we're hearing from the community loud and clear. You know, don't miss this opportunity to at least try connect the dots of our needs and our, and our offerings. You know, and, and I don't know what will happen in this. And then we've got another property coming. And there aren't many more, if any, that we're going to say, the public owns these now. What do we want for the greater public good? You know, so I'm, I'm in a quandary. I, I'm, I'm, my view is, I wish we hadn't voted on the first project. I wish we'd arraigned all this in and gotten all on the same page and incorporated these into the RFPs and, and had a community dialogue and discussion about what are our needs, what are our opportunities? But that's not where we are. I'm going to have a difficult time abandoning our already-agreed-upon strategies and goals and roadmaps. And I think if we abandon our agreed-upon strategies, strategic plans, why do we do them? If we don't adhere to them? And again, I'm not blaming anybody. I'll own up this, I'll own up, I've wished I'd have seen my own concerns months ago. Okay? So our next topic, what do we do? With parcel number two, a riverfront property. Some want it for affordable, accessible workforce housing. Some want it to be developed. I don't know, but this is coming in our next agenda item. And, and, and then we're down to only one property left. And we've already, you know, this is just a, this is a concerning, disconcerting path we're on. And I, and I think sometimes if you just, if nothing else, pull your belt in and stop things where they are at the moment present and try and make sure we're getting back on the path we need to get on, whatever that is.
Moving on to item 37, recommendation to accept the offer by the Kilborn Group to the purchase of 419 Third Street North and direct staff to develop a development agreement. Jim Gilmar to explain.
Thank you. As, as you know, we'll talk a little bit about the, the riverfront development plan that the city commission had approved last year, directed us to prepare and directed us to, or you adopted that plan as well as sent out those three RFPs. Just some background on the 419 Third Street South. One of the things we looked at as we put together that riverfront plan was what's the future land use for that parcel? You can see it here. The future land use that was identified in the recently adopted Invocus Plan was for residential at that site. We also looked at the Renaissance Zone Development Plan, what was set for Block 47. And it was called for clearance and redevelopment, either a mixed-use or a housing on that site. After the, I believe after the Renaissance Zone, as it was being adopted, the city acquired that north side of that block for a flood control project. And the remnant was set. I should note that the riverfront development plan did include targeting some of the TIF funds for affordable housing, both for the redevelopment of the Lasquid site as well as the housing authority owns a site, the Boral Colonial Property. Actually, it's on this Block 46. That property is over 100 years old. I think it's high maintenance for the housing authority. And it's probably, it could be appropriate to redevelop that site. So as you look at this riverfront plan, how do we come up with money for redevelopment when HUD's cutting the budget? The legislature doesn't give us money for, and you also have a struggle with your budget. So that's why the TIF was set up to provide some additional resources towards redevelopment of some low-income housing along the river. And one of the ways we get money for that is to bring in some private sector development. So I'll, I'll move on. We had three proposals for this, or excuse me, two proposals for this property. Overall, there were seven proposals for properties, these three properties. You know, the city still has a property at 69 Forest Street that was a, an old HUD project that's now vacant. The Economic Development Incentives Committee and Renaissance Zone Authority reviewed the two proposals of the 10 members of those committees that looked at those. Eight of them recommended selection of a project from Kilborn Group. This is more of a mass scene materials study. It's not intended to be an architectural design. The proposal that the committee liked, and I think Kilborn thought would work best, would be to develop 115 apartments on the site. There would be enclosed parking on the main level, 152 spaces, an investment of $25 million. The offer for the property was $162,000. There is hopes, you know, if we make a decision relatively soon, that they could start this fall with planned completion in 2024. Other developer will be asking for some incentives. We'll determine the level of those after a financial review. So that's, that's not part of this recommendation. The Keith Lear and Mike Kalmendinger from Kilborn Group are in attendance. So what you recommended motion this evening is to accept the offer from Kilborn Group for 419 Third Street North and direct city staff to draft a development agreement consistent with city plans and the offer from the developer.
Do I have a motion?
I say move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Preston.
Just like I did with the committee level, I need to put, I have a conflict of interest here and I need to declare that. I would ask the group to make the decision whether it's significant enough for me to be removed from the discussion. But the conflict is, we are a small investor in the downtown fund, which is the second lot with this Kilborn project. The second lot is owned by DFI. So there would be some benefit there.
John, what's your ruling on that?
My personal, my, my, my view would be that's, I would encourage you, given your disclosure, and I wouldn't consider it a significant financial pecuniary conflict, that I would hope you'd participate and vote.
I would agree with that, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Garrett?
I'd ask Nancy, if there's three already that want to do, that's fine.
Nancy?
I'm going to clarify for Nancy. The, the property to the south of the city property is owned by DFI. And that property will be sold to this new development group. So Commissioner Preston will not have an interest in what happens on the site. But she may benefit some from owning a small portion of another property or the property that's being purchased for this development. Do I have that right, Mike?
So the, the situation is, a conflict has been declared and the commission can decide to waive that conflict. And if you wish to make a motion to, to do that, and, and then that would allow her to continue.
Mr. Strand, want to make a motion?
I, I move that we waive the declaration of the conflict and allow Commissioner Preston to participate and vote.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Take a vote. Further discussion? Mr. Strand?
Just, thank you. For the sake of just informational sharing, Jim, two things. Purchase prices and anticipated requests coming for tanks, incentives. The Kilborn Groups, could you tell us the purchase price that they're asking or looking, offering for that property?
The specific purchase price is $162,984. However, the city will have a condition that they demolish the building on the property since it encroaches into the flood protection right away.
And if I might continue, remind me, is the appraised value at something like nearly $500,000?
I mean, the, the city assessor puts a value on the land based on overall downtown, and I think it's 480-some thousand. Is there, how they would value this as land. Sometimes they don't take a real close look at city property because it doesn't pay property taxes anyway.
And help me understand, this property is owned by the develop, diversion authority?
It's owned by the city. However, the city, as part of the diversion authority agreement, that, that joint powers agreement is required to return to the diversion authority any amount that we receive from the sale less administrative costs. The diversion authority has to approve that sale.
And lastly, it's my loose sense that option number two that is before the commission tonight, they're anticipating, there's an anticipation of about $3 million in tax incentives that would probably later be asked for?
Oh, yes, that was in their proposal, an estimate of what they'd ask.
Was that pilots or TIFs or?
It would be some sort of Renaissance Zone and TIF assistance.
Thank you.
Mr. Garrett?
We're not voting on the options, are we? We're voting on the sale of the property?
Correct.
Correct.
Mr. Strand?
Except you know what's coming.
Sure. Well, I know what I would vote for. And it wouldn't be incentives, you know?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Popcorn?
So I just want to comment real quick about John's comments. I, I told
I, I totally agree, we, we all know we need to have the different types of low-income housing, for sure, but, but to me, this location is, it's prime real estate, and so I, I will fully support, to give an example, like the mayor proposed, the Burrell, working on that site to redo that, and that's, that's prime. I'm just saying, that spot, it's river, riverfront views from the perspective of the value of that property, that's prime real estate, and so I, I do think we have to be very careful that we're wise stewards of the.
Prime real estate?
Sit down, sit down, sit down, sit down, sit down. Where's the police that we can remove them?
Selling land that belongs to regular, everyday people, and not one of us gets to have a say in this. You guys are selling our land.
Can you please excuse yourselves? Can you please leave? Can you please leave? Can you please?
Every black and native person in this city combined, one man does, one man does, and nobody's going to stand up. You all are supposed to be our oversight.
So anyway, Mr., so anyway, Mr. Chair, while I was so rudely interrupted, my comment is, we, we have to be careful with, we have to be careful that we're wise stewards, this is a very valuable piece of property. I, I think we agree that we need to have low-income housing, but this is not the spot for it. Thank you.
Mr. President.
So, the value, the projected value of this project is, well, can you, can you separate the city-owned lot and value that would be on that?
I mean, let's say it's fifty-fifty, you know, is that what you're asking? About fifty percent, about twenty-five million dollar project, and they have one each.
Okay, so, you know, I think when we talk about being stewards here, we're talking about the ultimate property tax base, the, the value that we will have to be collecting property tax from. And both projects, yeah, you know, I think the other proposal probably brings more in more quickly, so that's not the only issue here. I am, actually, I need to declare, I am going to be voting no tonight, and the reasons are, I want to explain why. This is one of very few city-owned, city-controlled properties, and we have had quite a bit of market value or market rate rent, rental units coming into downtown. We've had little or none of that middle, missing middle, which is that lower-income service industry worker that is probably working at two or three jobs just to, just to get rent, or to pay rent. So, I am truly worried that if we let this parcel go, we are letting go of one of the very few opportunities we have to bring something of value to the table for a developer. And that's why this whole conversation that Nicole, you were just presenting on, that whole conversation, needs to be happening a little more quickly, because we are getting to the point where, in, in my mind, perhaps, we are getting unbalanced in the downtown market, where we don't have the opportunity for people to rent that are actually providing those amenities, those services, in the restaurants, the bars, the hotels, wherever else that we're frequenting. So, yeah, I mean, I, let me also state, what has happened downtown has been a large portion of the developers that have been willing to invest in downtown, and Kilborn has been very, very good that way, so I want to publicly thank them for that. It's just that I think we're at a tipping point here, and we have a parcel that we have control over, and so that's why I'm voting no.
Mr. Garrick.
The reason why I like the Kilborn proposals is because they gave us three options, right? They gave us the highest subsidy options, which was sixty-five million dollars, it was in the packet. It was twenty-five million dollars for the medium, you know, the middle-of-the-road incentives, and it was ten million dollars for basically very few or no incentives, which I love, that, that's what should be happening. The reason why I like it so much is, I've been saying for years that when people say, unless I get this incentive, I'm not going to build there. No, what they mean is, unless I get the incentive, I won't build this thing, this particular thing. I will build there, just like Kmart, something would be built there, trust me, they would be. So this proves that point, that's why I really like this proposal. The notion that we put subsidized housing on an area of land, that the people in Fargo, all over City Fargo, have already invested very heavily in downtown Fargo, is, is, is really weird, okay? This is the most valuable land in North Dakota without oil underneath it, and we're going to put subsidized housing there? If I were an investor in Fargo, which I'm a resident here, I pay taxes here, I would be very upset with that. I want the best bang for my buck so that my taxes go down overall, because that's what we told the whole people of Fargo. If you invest in downtown, if you give TIFs and pilots, if you allow Kilborn and other groups to develop, in twenty years, twenty-five years, in forty years, when this parking ramp is paid off, your taxes will go down because the tax basis is greater. Therefore, it's less for you, it's more, because there's more for everybody else. That hasn't happened, right? So if we start subsidizing the housing, we're actually doing the opposite. Now we're, we're paying a company to put something on the land that we already invested in, that's bringing in half or a quarter of what it could be bringing in, and we're all helping pay, pay those people's rents. I'm not rich, okay? I'm a regular guy, I live in a very average home. I don't want to pay for your house to live on the river. So the idea that we're going to put affordable housing here, or more accurately subsidized housing here, is a slap in the face to anyone who pays taxes. And I, I think you need to think about that. You want to be nice to people who need subsidized housing, I understand that, but think about the people who pay taxes every, every year and don't ask for anything, they just want to be left alone, and you're asking us to subsidize them further on the riverfront? Good Lord, that's a, that's a good deal for them, not a good deal for everybody else. So, when you think about the people you're helping, also think about the people you're affecting, and you're affecting a lot of darn people in City Fargo when you subsidize housing to this effect.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor, and I have more comments, but in response to Commissioner Garrick's information, help me understand, what I'm looking at here, the proposals, there's three Kilborn proposals and one Authentic Housing proposal, and this data that you provided to the city committees says that Authentic will providing three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars a year annually, and that the Kilborn Group proposal, that number two, that your committee, the committee recommended, is two hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year, so that's less revenue.
John, I, I'd want to take a closer look at the Authentic Housing, their figures have been a moving target, I don't, I don't think it'll really appraise as high as that initial estimate of mine.
Mr. Chairman.
I'll, I'll continue, because that's really important information, and, and, and I'll say this, I have an immense respect for Doug Burgerman, the Kilborn Group, immense respect, and, and thank goodness for your investment in our communities. I just, I'm going to fight for the underdog every chance I can, if there's a, a need to. Authentic Housing is new, first thing we hear with Authentic, well, they haven't done anything before, first thing we hear, they haven't done anything, well, everybody's new once. So then I hear, well, okay, what is it that's keeping us from giving them more consideration, besides the fact that they're new? Well, we, we're, we're told then that, well, we, we don't know if they'll get their financing. And I'm hearing from the other side, well, we'll be able to apply for financing once we get an opportunity with site control. That's what the answer is. So I don't know, where's that teeter-totter land? You know, there's, there's debates about, about what type of, of tax breaks or returns or incentives would come with this, with, you know, none of this is answered. You know, here's, here's what I would, you know, can they do it, and how long would it take to do that? Or where's their marketing study? Where did we ask anybody else for a marketing study? Where's their parking? Our RFP didn't ask for parking. I mean, these are some really interesting issues to me that I just have a trouble getting my arms around. We didn't ask for parking, but now we're going to kill a project because it doesn't have project. We're asking for an RFP, but no, you haven't done anything before, so why should you get a project? You know, what I'd like to do is, here's, and I have a motion that I, I want you all to know, before this vote, that I have a prepared motion, and I'd be more than willing to advance it to a future agenda. So if people have noticed that it's coming, and, and then we can actually compare the proposals with each other. But in my mind, I would like to see us, first of all, with, with Authentic Housing, to see if it's viable, to see, people have said, some say they're open and some say they're not. I'd like to formally know if the Fargo Housing Authority is willing to work with Authentic Housing, formally. That's one thing I'd like to know. Second thing I'd like to know, is then if that's the case, if the co-developers are interested in working together, how long would it take you to get your credit application in place, if you are working together? Then if you are getting your credit application placed, how long would it take before you could construct and complete construction? Then I'd also like to know, people have questions, why you want trans, you want, you have a car share program, you, you have some other things in there with transit and parking, I'd like to vet that and say, tell us these answers in nine months' time, give them a window of time. Contingent on financing, contingent on a partner, contingents on meeting these, these thresholds that we're establishing for you. If they can meet those thresholds, I'm all ears to find out if, if they can do this, can get the creditors, can get the financing, can get the partners, I'm very interested in what they have to offer. If they can pay more taxes or not compared to the other, other proposals, will they pay more for the land or less for the land? I'm told they're, they're willing to pay up to four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, the assessed value. So there's, I have more questions than I have answers. And Chris, thank, I don't know, you're the housing authority.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And Mayor, I'll yield my, to him, just so formally we've got somebody from the audience.
Commissioner Strand, as everyone may not know, I'm Chris Brungard, I'm the CEO of Fargo Housing and Redevelopment Authority, and I've been working somewhat with Authentic Housing on a couple of different parcels over there. I've seen their pro forma, I think there's some shortcomings in the pro forma, I don't think in this current state that it's actually a viable pro forma. I, I'm not saying that's not a viable housing, in that location, but it, it would have to be refined, from its current form. We have, I've signed a letter of support right now for the Burrell and Colonial site with Authentic Housing. They've, they've applied for a USDA grant for a mast timber design with the professor from University of North Dakota, and I believe University of Minnesota. So they're looking at about an eight-story mast timber building at that location. And if you look on that, on that picture there, you actually see the Burrell site in the far lower left-hand corner. So we have the Burrell and the Colonial right behind it, and that parking lot, yeah, right there, the cursor's right over there, that's parking, that's all Fargo Housing Authority property. So I signed that letter of support with, with Tyrone, sent that off here last week to, to start that process of that design possibility, investigate what can be done. There's a lot of innovative ideas they've come up with, you know, with solar panels, geothermal, because, you know, if they're going up eight stories, they have to go pretty down deep with the, with the pilings. So if they're putting those pilings down, they want to take a look at putting in geothermal heat, so they reduce those costs. So it's a lot of innovative ideas, and we're, we're in support of this. If they are to, to build on the current site, that's, that's in question, we would be willing to, to manage the property for them. Once again, we'd come down to the cost, what they have listed in the pro forma is, is probably half of what we would have to, have to be paid to manage that size of building, so.
Chris, the other issue is that you control the site, so they don't presently control the site, so now they can go over tax credits, they can go after financing, they can work with you on the market study, you can work with you, with the developer and do that. So as far as viability, the Burrell site is much more viable than it'd come true, but for Commissioner Strand, how long do you think would it be before they would actually be in the ground with the project with the restraints you usually run into in the Housing Authority?
With the restraints we're having right now, and the Burrell Colonial site, the mast timber thing is a two-year process, so they won't know if they have an answer to that for two years, but they weren't, if we're going to do a conventional-type design in Burrell Colonial, I would probably say, probably wouldn't get their, their tax credits application into the state, comes every, every fall. I would probably say, probably by fall of twenty-three you have that, and then earliest probably be in the ground is, is probably, probably spring of twenty-four, be my guess.
Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Preston?
No.
Strand?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Number thirty-eight, applications for property tax exempt improvement in payment to buildings, do I have a motion?
I say move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. I'll take thirty-nine and thirty-nine eight together, my appointments for the community development.
I'll split them if I could. Yep, split them, please. All right, split the airport authority.
Oh, of course, okay. Appointments to the Community Development Committee, I have my recommendations, is there a motion?
Move to proof.
Second.
Any discussion, roll call vote, please.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
My recommendation for the airport authority, do I have a motion?
I say move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Garrick.
Did Tammy ask to be reappointed?
Yes, she did.
So, my, my concern is, I don't, I don't know Paula at all, my concern is that we've overturned the airport authority twice now, I think, in the last five years, so, six years. So, there is no institutional knowledge there at all, besides the employees, I think that's too rapid, I don't think they'll obviously appoint in it, and I think we're going to extinguish any kind of support for people who want to do it, if they know that they might have a four-year period, they're going to go for it, they're going to get out, you know, used and then thrown to the side, you know what I mean? So, I would prefer that we leave some people there longer than four years, but that's my, that's my preference.
Mr. Pepcorn.
Mr. Chair, I'm fully in support of replacing them all, especially after our audit, I don't know if we've had a discussion of that, but the rent rates were set in the nineteen-seventies, how many of us are still paying the same rent rates of the seventies for the hangar space? So obviously, there's a lot of incompetence as far as the financial management, I can't remember what else, but there were several things where the rates haven't, they're not current, they're not current market rates. So for, for the storage, they're, they're paying rates from the sixties and seventies, so that's alarming. And then, I do, I'm looking forward to the Jet Center, what the negotiation is going to be like with that, but I, I believe it's the same thing, where those type of facilities are at every airport, and we should make sure we are getting compensated. The taxpayers are the ones that are not getting the, the financial money that should have been coming to them, and so I wonder where that money's been going to. But to have, how would, how would, when you talk about low-income housing, wouldn't we all love to have the apartment rent rates right now, paying them that were the same in the seventies? That's what's going on at the airport, imagine that, that's embarrassing. And talk about fiscal mismanagement, I will give the mayor credit, I wanted to fire them all several years ago. The mayor's been much more, much more patient, but they all got to go, and I believe the director obviously should go as well, I'm looking, looking forward to that. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Garrick?
No.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Mr. Strand.
Could I rise to a point of personal privilege? I overlooked something, if, if you'd indulge me. The topic we just left with the issue of the awarding of the project, I, I'd like to alert the commission that I'll be advancing another extension of that discussion, and thank you, Chris, for being here today. So the people know I will be advancing a motion in our next agenda to, a way to encourage Authentic Housing and/or Fargo Housing Authority to, to look at a tax increment financing district for, for the Burrell location, and see if all of us can put our heads together and see if we can address this issue of housing. So you all know this will be coming, I just didn't get a chance to say, there's a follow-up that I'll be delivering to you, and I think it's important, so, thank you.
Thank you. Item three, which brought down resolution to establish massage therapy establishment requirements and fee, do I have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Grant Larson is on virtual, Commissioner Strand, you wanted this poll, what is your pleasure?
I, I, I'm happy with the vote, I just wanted my vote to be consistent.
Roll call vote, please.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
No.
No.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Done with all the business, right? So finally we get to get the guy who always gets us. Mr. Strand's birthday is on this Wednesday. So, John, we want to wish you a happy birthday, and thank you for remembering everybody else's